Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the special study session of the town council for September fifteenth to order. All council members are present. Ms. Pravetti is not at her chair, but Ms. Callaway, are you gonna lead us in this, or perhaps Mr. Schultz?
I'll give a little explanation because I'm the one who wanted it, and there she is. Welcome. I'm actually the person that asked for this because I am the person who's supposedly gonna figure out what proclamations get done, what resolutions get done, who attends what we say for the town, and it seems like we've just gotten a deluge of requests for legislative action, proclamations, resolutions, enacting policies, go on a trip that has specific legislative agenda, and it's hard to determine how to do that when we're all equal council members, and I'm not an independently elected mayor, and I don't want to presume that I'm taking a position that is not shared by the council. So I had asked Ms. Pravetti to put this on so that the council could discuss how it wanted to handle it. We have an existing policy, we have, you know, we could refer it back to the council policy committee, we could just discuss how we wanna handle it going forward, but I wanted to get all of your opinions on, and feedback on what you thought we ought to do, given that we get these increasing requests, and some of them are time-sensitive. So whoever wants to go first, or Ms. Pravetti, did you have something you wanted to say in addition to that?
I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that the sample ideas that were as attachments were really just a sampling of the things that we've seen in, just really in recent weeks. There are examples of other things that have come forward over many months. I know Jeanette Judd gets a lot of direct communication from a variety of community interest groups that would also like proclamations or resolutions, et cetera. Many of them are beyond our borders, but nonetheless, they, since you are working with other electeds and other capacities, they may be of other, of interest to you. So there are more than just this sample, the three items that were attached to the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll also add that as mayor, I get things from the council of mayors that are wanting the town and me as mayor to take a position on certain stuff, or sign on to whatever it might be. And I have not been doing that because the council has never discussed any of those things, and while my opinion may coincide with what they want, I don't think that's fair for me to just sign off without bringing it to the council to figure out what we wanna do. So Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A little bit of context that I used, and it's interesting because you discuss these issues, and then you find out, as the policy committee keeps finding out, there's all this stuff that we do that has no formal direction. Sometimes it has a history, sometimes not. But within that context, as mayor, I felt as though I was the person who would make appearances for the council, and when I'm not mayor, that the, whoever is, would make the appearances for the council. When I was asked as mayor to do a proclamation or something like that, if, if it was something that the council had weighed in on, then I was very comfortable doing the proclamation. If the council had not weighed in on it, I was less comfortable, but I would look to see if it was something that impacted our town specifically. With regard to advocating for legislation or taking positions, I personally never did that unless the council had weighed in on it.
So I'm gonna put you on the spot and say, well, what, what's your feedback for the staff or the rest of the council on what you think that we might wanna consider going forward?
I think that having the mayor, this is my thoughts right now before, before hearing the mayor and the other three of you, but I think having the mayor be the person who represents the town is a good idea. That we take positions on items that the council has weighed in on already is a good idea. The proclamations are, still a gray area for me. Like I said, I would sign them if the council had approved, had approved the concept, or if it was specific to our town.
I'm gonna call on the others that have been mayor first, and then I'll pick either one of you. So Councilman Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. I think as the mayor, it's important to have all the communication go through the mayor, as our council policy states, so I think that's a good thing to have. For instance, if somebody invites you to a legislative session or something, or a DC trip, that, that goes to you, and it wouldn't necessarily be the council members who would go on that trip. If you decided to go on that trip, that would be up to you if you were the mayor. Again, it, it doesn't necessarily represent Los Gatos, but it does represent Silicon Valley in a greater sense. So something like that, I think would be, should be the mayor's choice, but it shouldn't be, all the council members should go and have the town pay for it. When it comes to, I agree with Vice Mayor Spector's comments about proclamations. If it's Los Gatos-specific, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. If it's something from outside of Los Gatos, which we do get a lot of those kinds of requests, then I think the council should weigh in on it. And I, again, like the communication. I'll leave one other example that has happened recently. When, when you're invited to something like a Veterans Day parade in San Jose, and we each get individual, I'm assuming we each get individual invitations to this, I think we should be able to respond to those as individuals, and not necessarily appear as somebody speaking at the event, or representing the town of Los Gatos as a whole, but as just a council member attending the event. I think that's, that's reasonable, to respond on your own to those, those personal invitations.
Okay. And I will, I agree with you, and I will, would distinguish those from an invitation to an event where you're being invited because of your position with the town, but you're going to promote a legislative agenda that may not be one that's been formally adopted by the town. So for discussion purposes. Councilman Rennie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I'd say, things like ribbon cuttings, I was asked to do a ribbon cutting, and I figured out that the proper thing to do is then contact the mayor, who usually does ribbon cuttings, and in this case, I did ask you, did you want to do this ribbon cutting, and you said, no, fine, go ahead and do it. Turned out, I couldn't do it anyway, and I think maybe, I think the vice mayor may have done it. So that, that was the first comment, which seems to be an appropriate way to go. My second comment was, I'm a little worried about, we might be a little too restrictive about the mayor only goes on trips to DC kind of thing. And I was gonna point out, we as council members can do two, two things. First, we can be appointed by the mayor to the cities association. When go to the cities association, we have votes, we establish opinions, we, we do things because we are, you know, elected official, appointed to that body. It doesn't necessarily represent Los Gatos. Same thing in League of Cities. The second thing you can do is, there's policy committees with the League of Cities that you can volunteer to be part of, that the mayor doesn't appoint you to. And again, you go and you discuss and you advocate policy, you know, in your opinion. So we already do those kinds of things, sort of in, in the normal course of, of the cities association, and the League of Cities, and other organizations like that. We're sort of talking about singling out, well, you know, if you're invited to it, to go to Washington to advocate for education or transportation, obviously, you can't represent our town in a, you know, say, this is the town's position, but I think you can still go and give your opinion. So we'll see what others respond to that.
Okay. And it's just that that particular thing came up, but this has been a continuing issue, so we're not, I'm certainly not trying to single it out. I do think it's different than California cities, though, because you're going with a private, for that example, you're going with a private group that has a legislative agenda, and simply by appearing with that group, I think that the implication is that you are on behalf of whatever jurisdiction you're associated with it, supporting that legislative agenda. So that's what I would put in there. Before I call on the Vice Mayor, I'm gonna look to Councilwoman Seac.
Okay, thank you. Couple of thoughts. I do think that, to the most extent that's practical, I do agree that the mayor should be the, the voice of the council, particularly on positions, particularly when it can appear, or is, or if someone is asking for the town's position on certain things. And I think having a consistency in having the mayor speak for us, I think is important to do. As for these specific invitations, I think I would reserve it to the individual invitations. Oftentimes, it's very clear whether they're inviting you as a representative of the town, or as a representative, or just as yourself. Some of them don't even require any speaking, and it's just to be an attendance at a conference to learn more information. So in those regards, I think, I think it's fine as an individual to go. One thing, and Councilman Rennie had mentioned, the League of Cities, and yes, we are appointed to several different bodies representing the town. One example that I give is with ABAG. I'm the representative, but when there are certain things that take place that affect the town, such as our membership dues, that require town resources, bringing those decisions back, so that everyone is aware that the town either committed resources or committed certain time to it. As an individual, I think it's fine to attend, but I think when there's a commitment of town resources, or time, or, or position, I think it's very important that it come back to the council, have consensus, and when appropriate, or if a representative is needed, that that representative be the mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe Ms. Seac just mentioned whether we're being invited because we're on the council, or for, you know, for a personal reason. It's been pretty, it has been clear to me that the events and occasions to which I've been invited, I have been invited because I am on the council, or because I am the vice mayor. I would like to think that they were inviting me because I'm Barbara Spector, but as a practical matter, that is not the case. They're inviting me because I am a representative of, of the town, and I am on this body. When you go to these events, or meetings, or whatever they are, you're doing, you're generally doing one of two things. You're getting information, and that's what we do when we are generally on ABAG or League of California Cities. We're getting information. Then there is, then there are roles as giving information. We might give information, and I think if we give information expressly, then it should be something that this body has made a decision on. We could also be giving information impliedly. Let's use the veterans. Let's say that I, I was invited to the veterans' parade. Let's say I show up. If I just sitting there, there's no commitment from the, from this council. But let's say that the veterans' parade is to, to promote veterans' memorials all over the Santa Clara County. Well, in that case, if that's their agenda at that parade, my appearing there could communicate that that is an issue that this council approves of. So I do think we need to be careful in what we do.
Okay. Let me just make two comments based on the Vice Mayor's comments and Councilwoman Seac's comments. I serve as representative of the town to the VTA Policy Advisory Committee. And at the last meeting this past Thursday, the Policy Advisory Committee, which is not the deciding body for the VTA, it's the VTA Board, but the votes of the Policy Advisory Committee are, in theory, looked at by the board, and they create a record. So one of the things that we were asked to do was to endorse a big list, actually, I have it, maybe big, big list, of VTA 2040 projects. And the, these projects that we were asked to look at from the Policy Advisory Committee were Los Gatos, Saratoga, Morgan Hill, Gilroy, also VTA projects, also Caltrans projects. So if council recalls, when we were considering the VTA 2040 projects, one of the things we did was take the widening of seventeen off our request. So I looked at this list, and seventeen widening was on there. And so I inquired, okay, well, why is it on there? Well, that's a Caltrans request, it's not a Los Gatos request. Okay. And another thing that was on there was Highway eighty-five widening, toll lanes, et cetera. So after due consideration, I thought, well, all right, I'm a member of this committee, and the staff of the committee and everybody was advocating, well, all you're doing is saying it's a complete list, even though they said, well, it's not complete, but, okay. And so I, ultimately, I didn't, I recorded a no vote, because we had litigation on the eighty-five corridor, and we had taken the seventeen project off. So, and I use my discretion, because the council had not taken a position on that, and we had pending litigation, and we'd actually taken a position against one of them to say no, even though I realized that it's going through, but I didn't wanna have a vote recorded that was something that we didn't do. So that's one example. Another example was the letter that the mayor signed on the eighty-five study, where Ms. Pravetti and I went to all the meetings, but ultimately, we didn't sign anything or commit to anything before we circulated it to the council to make sure that it was okay. So those are situations, you know, that you find yourself in, and you go, okay, so like ABAG or League of California Cities, where it's either something that you clearly can do, 'cause, okay, or it's, implicates a policy consideration that the council hasn't yet weighed in on, or that council's been contrary. So I've had, I've had this issue come up, and then, you know, when there are events, I mean, if I go to the, like I did last week, the Los Gatos dance, and I say, welcome to the dance, okay, I don't think I have to ask anyone. And I think that's fair. If I sign a proclamation for a longstanding Los Gatos community thing, like Live Oak, Senior Nutrition, I don't think I have to ask anyone, because it's been done in the past, and it's fine. However, if somebody wants us to adopt a suicide prevention policy, that's a, to me, that's a policy consideration, so that came to the council. Or a human trafficking thing, that also got circulated to the council. So what I'm trying to figure out, and get, get everybody to weigh in on to the staff, is, well, how do we think it's appropriate? Maybe I'm just really conservative, and if other people think that that's wrong, great. But I, I just wanna get feedback on that. Councilwoman Seac.
Actually, I'll take a couple of examples that have come up recently. So the human trafficking, I'm presuming that all of us had gotten letters individually on that, and that was something of interest. So I think the procedure that was used for that, and granted, it wasn't, it wasn't something that needed immediate attention, but it went to our town manager, and she then circulated it to see if there was at least two, which is within accordance of our policy. So I think that is an example of how it can work well. It's clearly in our policy, and there's no confusion or gray area. Some other areas where I do get concerned is when people approach us individually, you know, this is very important to us, how do I get this on the agenda? And I think having a process to follow, so that it's not seemed as this is a, a priority for me individually versus the council, is, I think it's very important to have that laid out. And again, I understand that it works when there's nothing that's time-sensitive, but I like having that process in place, so that it doesn't put any of us on the spot to, to say whether or not there's a judgment that's important enough to, to rise to a Los Gatos level of proclamation. It actually comes to the, to the council, we give it due consideration, and then if at least two people agree, then it's on the agenda. So that's one area where I think the past examples have worked well.
Other thoughts? Councilman Rennie.
So I guess I wanna make sure that we stay effective when we go on, on other policy committees. And, you know, it really requires the council person to use their judgment. I think you did a good job of applying your judgment in that case, because, you know, a lot of the times, if there's no position by the council, and, and those policy committees doesn't consider it's Los Gatos, it considers you as a policy committee member. So you need to be somewhat effective, but keeping in mind, okay, if we have a policy, if the council has passed a policy or something against it, then it is a good idea that you say, I can't vote for it because X, kind of thing. Or if the council has supported it, you know, you say, well, our council does support this, and, you know, so forth.
Others? So I do wanna take up just the example, because it's interesting, and I don't think it's come up before, of the invitation for the trip to Washington. I am gonna single it out now, because it's, it presents an interesting question. If we get an invitation to a trip, so for example, as mayor, I got an invitation to go to the council of mayors in Washington. I wasn't gonna take a position or do anything except show up, like a convention like League of California Cities, like, sit there and listen to speeches, et cetera, but not take a position for the town. There wasn't any agenda attached to it. But if I get an invitation with a specific legislative agenda that's attached to it, that affects local things. So for example, if there's an agenda that says transportation measures, which is going to be part of a future possible ballot measure, which the council hasn't decided whether to endorse or not, and I now go as Los, Los Gatos, and I stand with a group of Silicon Valley people, I'm pretty much on the record as indicating that I'm for that, I think, just by attending. But I'm sure there's, people have different opinions on that, and I just wanna see how people think that that ought to get handled. Councilwoman Seac.
I think that example is, the example of this upcoming Silicon Valley leadership trip, where its specific purpose is basically to lobby a specific initiative. I think standing in that room implies that the town is part of it. And I, I realize that some may not agree with me, but having been a lobbyist in the past, they look at who is there, and your presence oftentimes carries as much weight as whether or not you say something. So those are, that's a distinction that I think each of us individually can draw a line on. When you're there as a part of an audience to listen, and you're not singled out, I think, I think that's, that's a comfortable distinction between a specific group that is going for a specific purpose. And we all know the 2016 ballot measure, who knows where this, where this council will stand on. And so I would be uncomfortable standing and implying that I'm supporting something that we have never even had a discussion on.
Others? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What, what you and Ms. Seac said raises a somewhat irrelevant issue, but I will touch on it anyway. Sometimes there, again, there are these policies, and we don't know about them. I did not know that the mayor of Los Gatos could go to the Conference of Mayors in Washington, DC. And so that's something, and, and then when I asked, found out about it, like after the fact, I was told that, well, it's, it's in your budget. But quite frankly, I didn't like, see it in the budget. So that's an issue of something that, off, off-point, but the council as a whole needs to be made aware of the existence of these opportunities, and who takes the opportunities. Going back to now, the, the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, we all received, I think the, I think ninety-three people in Santa Clara County received that invitation. We have received the invitations to that trip in the past. My memory may not serve me well, however, it seemed to me in the past, when we received those invitations, they were more generic, you know, just going to meet legislators. Mr. Leonardis might be able to better address that. But going to, for a generic reason, to me, is a lot different than going for a specific reason, because when I was one of the ninety-three people getting that invitation, I saw that there was a specific agenda, and I knew that I would not, that for me, it was not an appropriate thing for me to attend.
Councilman Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. So it was about a year and a half ago, when I was the mayor, and I went on the Silicon Valley Leadership DC advocacy trip. And as the mayor at that time, we essentially lobbied on behalf of Silicon Valley, and we did lobby on behalf of Silicon Valley interests, immigration reform, patent reform, transportation funding, things that our valley desperately, desperately needs. I didn't view myself as taking a position on behalf of the council at the time. However, with this latest invitation, it does seem that if anyone were to go, it would be the mayor, and it would be with an approval of majority vote of the council, if that were to occur. I, I don't feel comfortable going on this current trip because of, as Councilmember Seac mentioned, the 2016 ballot initiative, as Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Spector mentioned, just because we were, you know, several of ninety-three people who were invited to take a, a deeper position. So in the past, going to things such as the Conference of Mayors, I think, is a great experience, or as Councilmember Rennie is going to go represent us on the League of California Cities. Those are things that I think the town could accommodate and pay for. But when it comes to sending all five of us to this particular conference, I don't think that would be appropriate use of town funds, and I also think there are other conflicts at this point in time that I, I don't think would be appropriate. Rest at that.
Other comments? Councilwoman Seac.
I do wanna circle back and comment on something that Councilwoman Rennie said about just being effective and efficient with time. I think, I think this discussion has been very, very helpful. It's good to know where we all fall on this idea and on this topic. But in the end, I think we need, it's our individual perspective and, and understanding of how are we best representing our town. And, and again, with these specific committees that we're assigned to, whether it's the Water Board or the League of Cities, there are times where we do have to make a decision. And I think the agendas are, are given to us ahead of time. If we individually flag an area of concern, I think, I think I feel comfortable that all five of us would know what's, an area that should play a little bit more cautiously than one where it's in the best interest, and we would, we would vote in an affirmative manner. And then also, what I've also found over this year, is that there are these gray areas where I just don't know how to move forward, and I've oftentimes consulted with our town attorney, what do you think? What's the best way? And having that individual discussion and talking it with, talking it through with someone, I think has been very helpful. Unfortunately, because of the Brown Act, we can't do that with each other. But I think as issues of concern rise, I think we should have these discussions more often, so that we know where we fall on the spectrum, what's, what's considered to be more on the conservative side, what's considered to be more on the, let's be effective and, and efficient with our time side.
Other comments? Okay, so what it, what it want to do? Mr. Schultz?
There's, there's quite a few layers to this discussion. And it is a very good discussion. I've seen very many different ways to write the policy, all the way from these conferences, where you're really not participating. I like the information in, as opposed to information out, is a good way to put it. One topic you haven't discussed in the year and a half I've been here, it's really torn me, is that when you're advocating for legislation, and right now, there's many bills on the governor's desk right now to be vetoed or approved, and we don't have the ability to weigh in those, and I'd like the ability to do that, and we don't have time, and I'll give you some examples right now. And, and they really do, and that goes back to the California League of Cities, their main purpose is local control, to make sure we retain our police powers that we were able to regulate. And so there's, there's bills there right now, we ban medical marijuana dispensaries. There's a bill that's supposed to be vetoed, but it would take away our ability to ban, and we would have to allow medical marijuana dispensaries within our town. That's completely against our policy, but we don't have enough time to bring it to the council meetings. Another one is, is there'll be no parking for senior housing development. They will be required to have no parking at all. They're exempt if they're within so many feet of a transit stop. And so those are the ones, too, that I think that we do need to have a policy that would allow us to act. I think there's ways to have catches on all of this. I mean, a good example is this trip to Washington, DC. I think if there's, in that time, when you've got enough time, I think if a council member really wants to go, or the mayor wants to go, and it's in that gray area, I've seen it where it just comes directly to council to discuss, discuss that, and if there's a majority that agrees with him, then he could go. So those are not so much the time-sensitive ones that I'm concerned with, that we're not, we're not weighing in on. But maybe that's just not a big issue for Los Gatos to weigh in on those issues of local control with the League of California Cities. So I'll throw that out there. But I think we could write a policy that addresses everything But I think we could write a policy that addresses everything you've kind of said, that has this kind of layers, that talks about the conferences, and I don't know how we say it, but the information in and out, but when it's advocating a position that the council hasn't weighed in on, it really should come for the open discussion and decision if, in fact, there's a member that really wants to go.
Let me ask you this and follow up to your comments. If there's something, for example, of medical marijuana, that's clearly contrary to an adopted ordinance or whatever it is, it strikes me that you could write a policy that would say, we oppose it because we've got an ordinance, it says we're not going to do it. No parking for senior housing is a little bit more difficult because that could be changed for project by project, but I don't know how you'd write the policy, but it seems like it's easy for those where we actually have an ordinance. But what do other people think about that particular problem? Or do you want to just? I was, where I was going to go with this was say, do, do people think that we need to change the policy that we have? If you think, or not, do you think it's adequate, but we discuss with the town manager, the attorney, the gray areas, how do you, how does the council think we ought to approach these things? Councilwoman Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. I think the policy we have is well-written. It's good. And I think, as Councilmember Sayak expressed, if there's any doubt in the council member's mind, they could discuss it with the attorney and/or bring it to council for a vote.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. Leonardi. I like the policy as it is now. I do think, maybe not as quickly as the town attorney would like, but we do have mechanisms of bringing an issue before, before the council by way of asking the mayor to do it, by way of probably talking to the town manager and using that as a vehicle to get it on the Friday manager matters. So I believe there are ways to get unresolved issues before us, and that being the case, I would leave the policy the way it is.
Others? Councilwoman Rennie.
So I think I'm getting it. So I'm on the Cities Association Legislative Committee, which means that I've had to make several votes this year on the Cities Association supporting or opposing legislation. You know, we don't take many positions here, so, at our council meetings, so I felt okay voting because I didn't really have a yes or a no. I tried to think, okay, what's best for our city, what seems to be consistent with what our direction is when I made those votes. I'm assuming that I'm going in the right direction with that, and usually, we get a week or two notice of what, what the bills are that we're going to consider, so there isn't time to run something like that through here. So I have to just keep using my discretion on those, and I assume that fits in.
So I'll just say that by bringing this discussion forward, I am not at all questioning anybody's good judgment, and I expect you to exercise your good judgment when you go to all the policies, that's committees or whatever it is you're on, because I'm assuming that that's what you're going to do, and I'm assuming that that's what we're all trying to do. The reason for me bringing this forward was there was an increasing amount of things where we were going to be potentially a body or a signator on something that was going to be represented and taken to mean something that we might not intend, or that if it were a particular legislative agenda, that by mere presence, we would be endorsing it. And so that, that's what I was worried about. I, I'm going to weigh in with Councilwoman Leonardi and the vice mayor and say that our, I think our existing policy is fine, but I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, something specific that's said, and, you know, if you're being asked to take a position, for example, League of California Cities, and you go there and there's something that says, we want to have medical marijuana, you know, preempted by the state. We might, you might want to take a letter that says, no, actually, we don't because we have an ordinance. So, I mean, I could see us doing something like that, but the thing that I find more problematic is when we're doing things that we, we get, and if people are fine with the way I've been doing it, which is, okay, we want to have a suicide prevention policy, we want you to sign a proclamation for human trafficking, we want you to put green ribbons on trees, we want you to, you know, something that's going to affect the town, or the town is going to be now part of an advocacy position, then that's where I have a more difficulty. But I'm fine putting it in a Friday packet if we have enough time, but that's, that's where I am on it. Other people? Are you fine with the policy? Councilwoman Sayak?
I am fine with the policy. And I suspect as the, as the years progress, if we'll find what works and what works, and we'll get a rhythm. What is helpful, I think, just more as a practical process matter, if we can utilize Jeanette a little bit more. I do like knowing whether invitations have come to me personally or through the council. And so oftentimes, it's very helpful when, when some, an invitation is coming through her and she collects all our responses, and then by having it on our calendar, we see who's present. Little things like that, I think, would be quite helpful if we can utilize her more and looking towards the town manager, just so that we know that this is an officially sanctioned event that all council members are versus a request to appear individually. I think logistically, process-wise, that's one little thing, I think, that if we could all utilize Jeanette a little bit more, that would be quite helpful.
Anything else before I wrap it up? Okay. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it. It's very helpful to me, at least. So thank you all for being here for the study session and discussing this, and thank you, staff. And you get a half hour before we start again. I didn't see anyone here at the start, so I'm just going to say formally, does anyone have any verbal communications regarding this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the study session.